This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, we are going live and we are live.
Okay, I'm gonna wait till 3 o'clock and then we'll start. All right, Casey, are we ready? All right, welcome everybody. Today is Monday, October 5th. It's 3:00 PM and this is the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meeting. I have both Commissioner Hunt and Commissioner Hall. We're all meeting remotely still due to COVID-19, but all three of us are here, so we do have a quorum. First up is recognition and proclamation, Resolution 2510-A, National Hispanic Heritage Month. I think Christie's bringing that up. I will go ahead and read the proclamation in the matter of proclaiming September 15th through October 15th, 2020 as National Preparedness, oh, National Preparedness Month in Lincoln County, whereas I think we have that spelled wrong, National Hispanic Heritage Month is how it should read. Whereas during National Hispanic Heritage Month, we recognize the contributions made by the Hispanic and Latino Americans in the Lincoln County and celebrate their culture and heritage. And whereas together we recognize Latino community in Lincoln County, whose love of family, strong work ethic, community, and military services and willingness to share their heritage and traditions have made our county a better place to live. And whereas Central DIAUDA is recognized for its significant leadership and comprehensive service that helps Hispanic members of the community needing language in our systems navigation assistance. And whereas nationally, September 15th through September, or September 15th to October 15th is the focal point for recognizing and celebrating the many achievements and contributions of Latino Americans and applauding their proud legacy of services and dedication to this county. Now therefore, we, the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th, 2020 as Hispanic Heritage Month. Did we have anybody that wanted to present on Hispanic Heritage Month? I'm not sure if we ended up having someone from Central DIAUDA here today?
No, we did not. This was sent over from Deborah Jones.
Okay, all right. Is there anything either commissioners would like to say or comment on before we adopt the resolution?
Well, my initial thoughts are it is certainly important and appropriate that we do this. You know, this year has brought to light in a very new way, I think, the importance of the Latino community and their participation, among other things, in the Lincoln County workforce and how they are a significant vital part of industries like food processing and hospitality. And yeah, in my, oh gosh, what, 33 years in Lincoln County now, I have watched the Latino presence in the county grow steadily. And just from my perspective, that has enriched the vitality and diversity of Lincoln County in numerous ways.
Commissioner Hunt, anything you would like to add?
Certainly echo Commissioner Hall's comments. And again, sadly, but I think the virus pandemic has heightened awareness of the many contributions that the Latinx community makes to our county and our state. So certainly is appropriate that we recognize this month or during the time. And I have said thank you to many people for many reasons lately. And I will add my sincere thanks to the Latino Americans that make many unrecognized contributions to improving our county.
Yeah, I would just add to what both of you had said and say that our, our community really has changed in demographics. And, and with that, I feel at the county, there's a lot of things we need to do to kind of keep up. I think that COVID has brought some of that to light, but it makes me really pleased when I see our, some of our press releases and stuff go out, both in English and in Spanish, especially when we're talking about, you know, life-saving, really critical information around the virus and beyond. I also just wanted to acknowledge that we, we have some continuing work to do on that issue. And I'm excited to be working with both a small group of Latinx community members, working and advocating with myself and with our Director for Transit on trying to make those services more accessible. So that's something I'm excited about. And then additionally, we have a, for lack of a better word, work group, group of people from the Latinx community, an awesome group of people that has been meeting regularly with community leaders here in the last couple of months, meeting remotely. We've had some really nice dialogue and conversations and really trying to make sure that services are available and that we have the ability to serve everybody in our community. And a big thank, thanks to many of our own staff, many staff from OSU Extension, from Samaritan, and from other places in the community, as well as citizens that have really stepped up to help with translation services and really helping us navigate into that community and do what we can to make sure that we're serving everybody. So a big thank you to everyone that has kind of allowed us to make the changes we need to make and that continue on that journey with us. With that, I will entertain a motion, though we do need to make a change to the title that's in it.
Madam Chair, I would move that we adopt Resolution Number 20-5-10A, recognizing September 15th to October 15th as National Hispanic Heritage Month in Lincoln County.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Thank you. Next up is the adoption of the consent calendar. And these are items of a routine nature, but if either staff or commissioner wants to pull, pull an item for discussion or further in information, we can do that. Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion for that.
Madam Chair, I'll move for approval of the consent calendar as presented.
Okay. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Sorry.
All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, we're, we're off our mojo here.
Hold it against me.
Okay, all right, motion carries. All right, next up under reports, and, and a couple of these have a couple pieces to each of them. But first up is our Echo Mountain Complex Fire Update. I think we're first going to be getting an update from Wayne and Sheriff Landers. But additionally, today, we have both Dale and Carissa from Red Cross giving us an update on their services for what they're doing in terms of helping people displaced by the fire. So we'll hear from them as well. So Wayne, did you want to start?
Sure, and I apologize. First up, I'm having some connection problems, so I'm on my phone today. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Loud and clear.
Good, thank you. So yes, there's a lot of activities that still go on as we move into the recovery phase from the fire. We're going to have an update, as you indicated, from the Red Cross to help us plan the, both the immediate and then the intermediate housing that might be necessary for people who were displaced by the fire as we work on the activities that get people back into their homes. And then the other thing, the major activity we're engaged in is debris cleanup. And we're going to be doing one item in our decision and action calendar today that relates to a prerequisite to get going on a statewide effort, actually, that's being done. At a task force that was stood up by Department of Environmental Quality and the Oregon Department of Transportation to look at the, the issues of cleanup of the debris that came out of these horrific fires across the state. The, the makeup of that debris includes household hazardous waste, ash, and a variety of other matters. There are really, it's mind-boggling for those of you who have been able to either visit in person or see any of the news media coverage of the devastation that occurred out there. So I think rightfully so, and we've learned lessons from other jurisdictions, especially in California. This is something that really can be done on a, a larger basis. There's some economies of scale that we can really do the best job for accomplishing cleanup of that debris and doing it at, in a way that assists all the people who were damaged by the fire. So that's ongoing right now. We have a consultant that the state hired who is coming in to do one of the first steps in that particular process, which is to get a right of entry or a right of access to the properties in which people will grant us right to access those properties, so we can bring in contractors to both assess the damage and complete the work on the properties. So that's one area that we're dealing with. FEMA continues to be onsite at our office space in the mall complex in Lincoln City and assisting people with their individual applications for assistance from the federal government. We're also having others who are available from the county, including folks from solid waste, folks from planning, and septic who are assisting people through, it's a pretty arduous process to go forward to contemplate what needs to be done to both get the properties ready to be rebuilt or replaced and a time-consuming process. So we're providing resources up in the Lincoln City area to assist people in those areas. So I think I'll stop with there and take any questions you might have.
No questions from me at this point. I definitely have questions for Red Cross and some of our other presenters. Commissioner Hall, questions for Wayne?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And Mr. Belmont, so this is the space we're talking about at the Factory Outlet Centers in Lincoln City where the Multi-Agency Resource Center was located. FEMA has continuing staff presence there. Do we have a tentative or firm date how long they will be, they will be present there?
Tentatively, I think it's through the next few days at least, but I don't know the extent, how long they'll actually be there. But there are other resources that are coming forward. We're also looking at doing some contracting to help people navigate the system of benefits that they might be eligible for, you know, as an array of services, both local and statewide that are available. And it can be pretty daunting to try and figure out what it is you might qualify for and how to actually apply for those benefits. So we're working on an arrangement to have someone come in and be a navigator to assist people in accessing those services and resources. And right now, the way it's looking, and there's still some details to work out, we're going to try and keep our presence there at the outlet mall for a variety of services. And that includes also our donation center that's there. We've had some, some of our folks from our Behavioral Health Program there to help people who may be in, need some assistance for crisis kinds of situations and, and just general support. But that's, as it stands right now, those services are all going to be in that little complex of offices there at, at the outlet mall.
Okay, I am really glad to hear this. And just a personal comment or observation that I think the idea of a disaster navigator is an outstanding idea because, you know, I was present at the Multi-Agency Resource Center for all three days, talked to a lot of members of the public who came in, observed many others. And this may be kind of an oversimplification, but basically I saw two types of people. They walked in with notebook or clipboard in hand. They were very focused, made a beeline for, say, the FEMA type table, then went over to North Lincoln Sanitary, then jumped over to our Planning Department. And others frankly who looked in, walked in looking a little lost, you know? One woman who reached out to me and personally, a few days before the mark opened, looking for some guidance. I told her about it and encouraged her to come, and she did show up. But, you know, she came up to me and just said, you know, "It's wonderful you're doing this, but frankly, I feel a little overwhelmed and I'm not even sure where to get started." And I directed her to our emergency services staff who were able to at least get her pointed in the right direction. But, you know, as you observed, Mr. Belmont, a lot of this is incredibly complicated. You know, I've been hearing again anecdotally, some people already getting FEMA benefits, some people getting denials because they, you know, simply don't qualify, but many, many people getting their applications kicked back, not because they don't qualify, but for simple technical errors or omissions. So just I'll say kudos, and that has my full support.
Just to, if I could just comment on that to add on a little bit to what Wayne had said. So I have had conversations over the last couple of weeks. We, first of all, had to get some clarity from FEMA on, on how we could contract, and there's a lot of stipulations on that. But we have had conversations, or I've had conversations with a local nonprofit agency that already does these kinds of services. So they're in the business of doing that. And Janet from our team, who's our paralegal, is already working on that contract with them. And they are already looking to hire someone that's from that specific area and has existing relationships with many other nonprofits and agencies to do that work. So things are moving as quickly as possible as they can in terms of contracting with the group to do some navigational services.
I'd also like to point out maybe that the call center remains as a central contact, a single contact phone number for the county to look at the array of county services that are provided. So if you call that number, it'll direct you to either the department, if you, the department you need to talk to and what services you're looking for. But if not, it finally comes back to emergency services, and they can help you navigate around, at least through the county service, array of county services that are being provided.
So the call center is currently still navigational, but I understood, and please correct me if I'm wrong, we are looking at an eventual wind down or phase out of the call center. Is that correct? And if so, do we have a timeline on that?
Well, I think, I think it's actually going to be, what is today, Monday? It's either today or tomorrow, actually, but it won't be actually eliminated completely. What'll happen is instead you'll, you'll get a list of service providers that are currently responding to the wildfire recovery needs of folks in the county. And so you'll be able to actually connect directly to that department and get that information. And if you can't, if you're not really sure what you need or where you're going to go, you can, at the end, call emergency services and they'll take the phone call. So you will end up with a, a warm body you can talk to to try and figure out what you need.
Okay, so there will still be a, a warm body answering that call and at least trying to direct the callers to the appropriate department then? Not just an electronic menu with push one for planning, push two for, you know, et cetera?
Well, I think again, it'll go through the array of what the services are. If you know what you want, you can push the number. If you don't know what you want, then you can connect them with a warm body.
So it will essentially be an electronic, you know, an electronic menu and then, and then an opportunity to press the, you know, press the button that would connect you to, directly to emergency services?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
I would also add to that, that we are working on trying to update, upgrade, one of those words, our website specifically to the recovery effort. So I know our PIO is working on that this week and actually stealing some framework from other communities that have been affected by fire in the past. So trying to use the same template from other communities that have created these websites that where some best practices can be learned from in terms of a website that's user-friendly and helps people navigate those services. So that'll help as well. Commissioner Hunt, questions or comments for Wayne?
Oh, let's see, am I, no, I'm not muted. Um, well, I guess I would start by saying I agree that it's terribly confusing and certain frustrating for people that are dealing with the numerous agencies and how they overlap or aren't able to provide questions, answers to questions. A couple of thoughts. First of all, I noticed that there is now an individual assistance map, if you will, that just I received earlier today. And I would ask that our PIO get that up on our website as quickly as possible, as I think it provides some concept of, of the sequence of actions that might be taken. I'm a visual guy, and to me, it's a nice visual. So I think it is good information and I think it would be of value to, to the people dealing with this, these disasters. Second of all, I would encourage people not, not to be afraid to pick up the phone and call, whether it's our call center, whether it's the Planning Department, whether it's the Red Cross, Salvation Army, any of the other volunteer organizations. Pick up the phone or grab your cellphone and don't be afraid to call and ask questions. And I think most of the people that will answer the phone are certainly committed to trying to provide the best information that's available so that the best assistance that's available can be rendered. And again, I know it's frustrating. I want people to know that we're continuing to tweak the process, improve the process, and help people recover.
Yeah, I would just add to your, you know, call people sentiment, that people can certainly call us as well. There's been some disconnects that have happened between agencies and stuff that I, I wouldn't have known about and wouldn't have been able to advocate for and fix had I not gotten a call from a constituent telling me that they were being told one thing over here and another thing over here. So sometimes we really need to know what people are experiencing and where those things are so that we can work on fixing those. So, all right, anything you wanted to add to the discussion from an emergency management perspective, Sheriff Landers? I don't see Jenny or Sam on the phone, so I'm assuming you're kind of the, the rep for them today?
Sure, I think Council Belmont said it all, and good afternoon, commissioners. I think the, the one thing to add to the call center is, is that it's also still back to also COVID questions too. So if people have COVID questions, I think that was another reason to divert it to basically directed services. So kind of a press one for COVID, two for fire, this type of thing. But if all else fails, it will be go to a live person in emergency management during business hours or where they can leave a message for somebody to get back to them. So I think that's the important part to put out. As far as the response, again, I think Council Belmont talked about recovery, but just to let everyone know that we still have deputies that are working 24/7 in the affected areas and to maintain that, reduce the risk of criminal activity in those areas. We're still hearing that even though there were several houses that, that were safe from the fire, that with the utilities being cut off, that people aren't going back, there's probably only about one-third of the houses that remain in the affected areas have occupants in them. So we want to continue that coverage to make sure that criminal activity isn't occurring for those residents. But other than that, I think, like I said, Council Belmont covered most of it on the recovery and all the updates that we would have. So thank you if there's, unless there's any questions.
Any questions for Sheriff Landers, Commissioner Hall? Nope, and I see Commissioner Hunt shaking his head. Okay. Next, we'll move on to, oh, Red Cross. I almost forgot about you guys. I'm so sorry. Okay, next we'll hear from, update from Red Cross. I think we have a few people on the phone from Red Cross. I think we have Dale and Carissa, if I'm correct, maybe a few others. So maybe I'll let you introduce your team, Dale, and we'll go from there.
Hi, thanks, everybody. Thanks, commissioners, for having us here. And really welcome this time to sort of update you on the operations from our perspective and how things have been going. And then give you a little bit of a preview into what's going to be coming up over the next few weeks. And then we'll welcome your questions, of course. So I'm, I'm joined today with, by Carissa Haddich, who's our Executive Director for the area who covers, who covers Lincoln County. My name is Dale Koontz, and I'm the Regional Chief Executive Officer. So I cover the whole state of Oregon plus Southern Washington. That's what our Cascades region is. And Christina Thomas from our Government Relations Team has also joined us. She's now flown back home and left Oregon, but she was assigned to help us out for the first few weeks here after the disaster. She's been a great resource. So with that, I thought I would just jump into sort of where we are right now. We are continuing to work with, with Lincoln County through the EOC, through great partners there. We're continuing to work with the state, with the Office of Emergency Management, with Andrew Phelps and his team, and then of course with FEMA and, and sort of our agreement to work with FEMA and the state and everybody. And everything from our perspective and those pieces is going really well. Sort of the partnerships are leveraged the way that we should, and we're, and we're working on, on that. We continue to shelter folks who are affected by, by the Echo Mountain Fire. And we have them currently right now in what we're calling non-congregate sheltering, and that's hotels. And throughout the operation, they did, we did have a congregate shelter set up. Then we put them in the non-congregate, then we put them in the congregate, and then it was a non-congregate as the evacuation changed and pushed people south. And right now, everybody who is in Red Cross care is in a, is in a hotel in Lincoln County. And will be, and we continue to extend those, those dates of reservations. And we will continue to extend those dates of reservations forward as needed. There is no hard stop on any of the rooms from our perspective. We do turn into, we do come across instances where a hotel is unable to continue based on prior reservations. And so we do our best to work with those particular clients in those situations to move them to other hotels that may have more availability in the long run. We're also working really closely with the, with the hotels to sort of, and we will be with our clients as we, as we look to consolidate where possible over the next, the next weeks and months into fewer hotels. Again, to make a better living situation for, for those clients and then to sort of make our operation just a little bit more efficient. And with the priority being the health and safety and well-being of the clients over the efficiency of the operation. We're continuing to provide food for those who need it in our care. To date, that's about 25,000 meals, if I remember this number correctly. And we'll continue to do that as needed throughout the operation. Some of that, we may evolve some of that, that feeding. Right now, we're doing sort of through our, our typical sort of feeding plan and providing meals to folks. We may change that in the future to provide, again, more flexibility for folks in our care so that they can have choice options and other things to sort of make things more comfortable for them long-term. We are planning for this for the long term, and we are committed to, my apologies, we are, we are committed to being in Lincoln County and across the state wherever we are needed for as long as we are needed. There is no hard, fast date of which we are going to leave because we were in Lincoln County before, we're in Lincoln County now, and we will be in Lincoln County years after this disaster, and folks have hopefully been on their road to recovery. So there is no like pull-out date or anything like that from the Red Cross. We will be here as long as we are needed. And, and what that means will, will change as we move into recovery. And so right now, we're, we're in the shift from moving from the immediate life safety of making sure that people have, have sheltered and they have food and they have other wraparound services that we provide, to then looking to help them into their road to recovery. So the marks and supporting folks through that process, I love the discussion of the navigator. That's like Red Cross happiness signals, hearing the navigator discussion and making people, getting into the process because that's also our experience as well. We will be shifting into our recovery process soon. And the recovery process is going to do two things in particular. One, it's going to talk to folks who are under our care, who maybe can go home based on the damage situation of their home, the water availability, the access availability of their home. Again, and just having a one-on-one conversation with them so to help them get to home if they can. And then it's also going to, we're going to do those interviews of people. We'll be able to better identify folks to potentially qualify them for Red Cross financial assistance. And it's the small financial assistance that we're hoping to start in the coming days and weeks that will go to those affected in Lincoln County. And I just looked at the numbers and it's around 250 households that, based on the damage assessment from, from Lincoln County, from FEMA, that would qualify for Red Cross financial assistance. that based on the damage assessment from, from Lincoln County, from FEMA, that would qualify for Red Cross financial assistance. Red Cross financial assistance is a small financial assistance. I want to repeat that small. It is a small amount that allow people to sort of helps them with their immediate expenses. And I talked about it getting you to the doorway to recovery or the gate to recovery on that, on that road to recovery. It is not the thing that's going to make you whole. It is not the thing that sort of will, will drastically change the situation. But for a lot of people, it's that little bit of help that gets them exactly where they need to be to take their next step in the process. Throughout that process, we strongly encourage everyone to register for FEMA and other county resources that may be available to them because it does take all of these resources and community partners to really make all of this work for folks to recover. And once we have that plan finalized and it's very close to being finalized, I'm happy to share that with a one pager that we can give to, give to the county. We want to be very particular in that it's only 250 households that are eligible. And so we want to really micro-target those generative households. We don't want to sort of let everyone in Lincoln County know that this financial assistance is there because we don't want to disappoint a lot of people. And that's our, that's one of our big goals. And with all this, you know, our phone number, 1-800-RED-CROSS, feel free to give it out. We're always happy to help however we can. And that's the best, the best quickest way to get in touch with the Red Cross. And so with that, I'll take questions if you have any.
Well, thank you again for being here. I have a couple of questions to start and then I'll turn it over to Commissioner Hall and Hunt. You know, while I understand this is, things change every day with the situation. My understanding is you guys are committed to provising, providing that non-congregate housing until at least November 1. Is that still correct?
Yeah, so we have, just like you would reserve hotel rooms if you're going on vacation. We've reserved the hotel rooms currently that we have through November 1 and we'll continue to look to move those out as needed. Yeah, again, as needed, but we will, we will continue to do that. I wouldn't treat that 11/1 day as a hard date at all. That's just simply the sort of, that's the slider.
Yeah. Understood. And then second, you know, can people still register for services or potentially get housing? You know, I have heard from people that maybe, you know, initially when evacuations happen, they maybe, you know, went to a friend's house or went tent camping or did something, you know, not necessarily recognizing that they were going to be in this for the long haul. And now it's getting cold and tent camping isn't working or their kids are going back to school and need wifi, which you don't have in a tent. Or they're staying at a friend's house and they've kind of overstayed their welcome or what have you. So if people now, you know, several weeks after the disaster are realizing that they need a different type of arrangement, is it too late for them to call Red Cross, go through that process?
Yeah, so in coordination with, with the county EOC and with other EOCs around the state, we have started a process that we call no registration. And what that does is in the beginning days of a disaster, everyone is welcome. And we do that very, very intentionally to cast the broadest possible net for support for folks. Now, if you present yourself for Red Cross services, we do ask you your address. During the early days, we did not so that we can verify that you are directly affected and have damage that will qualify you for Red Cross assistance. So again, it's just sort of, at some point, we need to sort of set what the size of the, of the universe, of the scope of, of support that we're going to be providing as a nonprofit. This is important for us. Just sort of help us to ability, our ability to continue to do this and then stay on track with our core mission.
So you can still register? You would just need to prove that you are indeed impacted by the fire?
Correct. And you can do that number.
Okay. Yeah, okay. That's all my questions for now. Just again, thanks for being here. Thanks for the conversation we had last week and I hope that we just continue to check in with each other. I know that you've had ongoing discussions with the emergency operations center, but it's glad, it's good to connect directly as well as a board with all of you. And with that, I will see if Commissioner Hall has any questions or comments.
Yes, I do. Thank you Chair Jacobson and thank you to all the Red Cross team, not only for their presence at today's meeting, but on the ground presence from the very beginning. And I want to circle back, even though you did address in some detail the question of non-congregate shelter because at least the folks who are displaced that I'm hearing from, you know, I understand why you're not giving a hard end date, that it sounds like you're really going to be dealing with the situation as it evolves, but, and they also are aware that we are working on a variety of potential interim steps. But basically the fear that I'm hearing from people is, you know, maybe they are not up to, don't have the resources to look at say RV camping. And, you know, they know that in Lincoln County for rent, you know, rental apartments and houses, we've got a functional vacancy rate of less than 1%. So literally these people will probably have nowhere to go immediately. So if, if you can amplify it all on the reassurance that, that assistance, at least in some form, is going to continue until folks can get into a more stable situation. You know, even if it ends up being a FEMA trailer or something like that.
Yeah, absolutely Commissioner Hall. We, we will be providing our sheltering resources as long as needed. And, you know, folks do not need to worry that they're going to be asked, you know, that somehow the Red Cross resources are going to end out and we're going to say, oh, that's it. The, you know, we've, we've helped enough. We're an organization that continues to help and, and are happy to. What we do do is we work really closely with FEMA partners and with the state partners and with other local community partners and other organizations to help people make that next step. A lot of times folks would go from, in a non-COVID world, folks would go from a congregate shelter, so a high school gym or civic center or something like that. And then with FEMA assistance, they would qualify and get a hotel room. We've sort of skipped that whole step because of COVID and we put them directly into hotel rooms, which is the best possible thing for them. But what that also does is it kind of muddies, it, it muddies sort of their road to recovery a little bit. But we are working really closely with FEMA and with the state on the sheltering plan for the state. Because I would say unfortunately, the issues in Lincoln around housing vacancy and rental vacancy are not unique to Lincoln. And so it's a, it's a common problem that we're seeing throughout the state. And it's one that I know there's been active daily discussions about that we're happy to play our part in. Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks Commissioner.
Commissioner Hunt, questions or comments?
I'll offer a comment. I will be candid in that I think some years ago, I was a bit concerned about the Red Cross's presence in our county and their ability to respond in the event of an emergency. But I have nothing but good words for you and your organization based on what I saw right after the, the fire outbreak. I had been working in the call center and it was somewhere around 9:30 at night. The call center had stayed open late that night. And I stopped by the rec center to see how the Red Cross was doing. And I'll be candid, somebody kind of put a bug in my ear that it was a real disaster. And when I went in there, I have to say, I found it well organized. I found for the most part, people were socially distancing. There seemed to be a rhyme and a reason as to gee, the people with dogs were here, the people with cats were there. The people that needed more intensive medical care were there. And I will say that I saw an abundance of cots, blankets, food, not just junk food, but good food. And I was, I was impressed and I will ask you to share those comments with the people that may have been involved in the rec center. Because certainly from what I saw, the Red Cross was doing a good job and doing the best that I think you could certainly ask under those circumstances. So good work. Thank you.
Thanks Commissioner Hunt. That really does mean a lot from us. I would say, you know, this is the largest disaster Oregon has ever seen. And it stretched, I'll be honest in that it stretched our, and stressed our resources, our volunteer resources in particular. And that we had operations from Lincoln, from the Echo Mountain Fire, all the way down to Plameth with the Chillicoon Fire. And then all the way down to Medford with the, with the Alameda Fire. And so I will be honest and say that it stretched our operations. But in that stretching up our operations, it's also one of the proudest moments I've ever had as a Red Crosser. To see the local community volunteers show up to see my own staff, one of, one of whom lives in Otis and we talked for a few days, had lost her home. And she continued to work and care for the people of Lincoln. That's where she wanted to be, working on the front lines. And her husband, the day that they had heard that they had lost, that they had potentially lost their home and was helping in one of the shelters and for that little bit, he said, you know, this feels good. And, and so that's my, my only ask is, you know, we need more Red Cross volunteers. The Echo Mountain Fire, while, while devastating, was also not the biggest disaster or hazard that Lincoln County faces. And so I would love your help and support to build an even stronger Red Cross so that we can support all the folks in Lincoln and the county in particular as a great partner even more in the, in the weeks and months coming up.
Very good. Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I would just add that I think as, we all can breathe a little bit and, and take a pause. I think as we do our after-action debrief, obviously having Red Cross at the table for that would be really vital. But beyond the debrief around the fire, I think as we think about our Cascadia event potential and the playbook that has been written for that, both at a local level and at a state level, I think we've learned a lot from the smallish disaster compared to what that probably would be if we face that. And I think there's a lot of lessons we can tease out and learn and rebuild that playbook. So hopefully you guys will be willing to, to sit down and really talk to us about that. And it sounds like, you know, more volunteers for Red Cross in the local area would be an important part of that for you guys. So, so hopefully we'll, we'll do that here in a little bit. All right. Well, thank you again for, oh, go ahead.
No, I said just thank you for having us. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you for being here. We appreciate it as well. All right, moving on, Lincoln County Public Health COVID-19 update. Rebecca Austin, our health director, could not be here today, so we have our new deputy director with us. I think Christie's scrolling, provide the data. Yep.
Well, I don't mean to interrupt, but it's 3:45 and Lincoln County School District is on the docket. And we have to leave at four o'clock for an all-district meeting. Is there any way we could jump in?
Florence says, are you able to stay later if we have Dr. Gray go now?
I will message Jenny Damaris that I'm going to be late for our meeting. No problem.
Okay. All right, go ahead, Dr. Gray.
Sorry to ask, but it's just we have another, as I said, we have an all-district meeting at four o'clock and this is, this is what we need to do. So yeah, so can you give me specifically, is there what in particular commissioners you're looking for from Lincoln County School District? We also have on the line Assistant Superintendent Susan Van Leeu, who is our resident COVID expert.
Yeah, thank you Dr. Gray for joining us. I think what, as we were moving into phase two here a couple of weeks ago, I think we got an inquiry, one from a reporter and one from a citizen, just kind of asking for a general update from the district. And, you know, our numbers are looking pretty good here and what it looks like in terms of the hybrid model and that kind of a thing. So just kind of a general update on, on where we are with educational in-person services in Lincoln County.
So I can give a bit of an update and then I'll toss it over to Susan. Going back to the previous conversation with the Red Cross and housing for our kids, we have 358 students who live in the Otis area. And 57 of those students are homeless now due to having no home to go back to and having a very difficult time accessing our online comprehensive distance learning model. So they are largely, some are housed all over the state. But the ones that are here are largely housed in hotels with inadequate wifi. That has made it incredibly difficult for them to be able to access the work that we're doing. And I appreciated your question, Katie Jacobson, about like the time is coming where they need to like go somewhere. And while Red Cross will get you to the door of your recovery, we are really concerned about where these Lincoln City families are going to go. I know I emailed the mayor and the city manager of Lincoln City. We talked a little bit about FEMA trailers. I don't know if that's real or not. But at some point, the kids are going to have to get out of the hotel or out of the tent or off the beach because the weather's turning and we need to be able to get them hooked up a different way. I also wanted to state that in the very beginning of the problem, the, the event, the wildfires, personnel from Lincoln County School District was very involved in assisting the Red Cross. Because at the very beginning of the situation on that day, it was very disorganized. And that's why we went to look at the Newport Parks and Rec after the shelter had moved from our high school to OCC to the rec center. And at that time, people were not being socially distanced or wearing masks and they were congregating. And we have firsthand observation of that. I just want to say Doug Hunt, that's probably where that came from. Maybe you came and visited a little later, but in the very beginning, we were incredibly concerned about what the COVID situation would be if that didn't change. And it did change and it got much more organized and people began to be separated and wearing masks and doing exactly what they needed to do. I just want to say, we were very concerned at the beginning and we expressed that concern to Jenny Damaris at the EOC. So glad that things got so much better very quickly. So with the way that the COVID numbers are currently, starting on Monday, the 12th, we are having, we are implementing what's called the K3 exception. And that means that under the K3 exception, we have less than 30 cases per 100,000, less than 5% positivity rate. No cases in any schools for over three weeks. And so kindergarten students from the four kindergarten schools will be coming back in person. They're not coming back full-time. They come back in a hybrid model. So it's still only half the kids on any given day. And three days a week, they're not in school. They're still online. That's the hybrid model. We also, under the limited in-person instruction, are having two hours a day of career technical education programs back in all four high schools. And we are also having some structured learning center, special education students associated with those programs, also in limited in-person instruction for two hours a day as well. So we're pretty excited about that because frankly, that's our first foray back into having students on campus. Up to that point, we have been comprehensive distance learning only. And I also want to say that comprehensive distance learning is a minimum of 50% or more of the time. Teachers are teaching in real time. And so it is not the education we had last spring, which was what we call crisis learning or pandemic learning. It wasn't really, teachers work really hard, don't get me wrong, but it was not what it, what it is now. Let's put it that way. So we're looking at if we can keep our numbers down, God willing and fingers crossed, everybody wearing masks and socially distancing and washing their hands and being careful. We'll be able to add first grade two weeks after that and then second and third grade after that. And after that, we hope to be full-on hybrid and it has a higher standard yet. And that's less than 10 cases per 100,000. And we're very hopeful. And we're very hopeful that we can do that. And then we would begin bringing back another grade and another grade and another grade. And our goal is by the time we hit the new year, that we've gone fully hybrid in all grades, K12. And with a view, of course, to having full-time school sometime this year. We're also looking because we have, you know, the school district is under the auspice of the Oregon Department of Ed in the governor's office. So the phases, in a sense, don't really apply to us. We're we're under the governor because she is the head of education. But because of phase two allowing playgrounds to open, October 12th, we're opening our school playgrounds as well. And we'll do that very carefully. It will not be during school hours. And they will be closed during school hours. They'll be open after school hours. And every morning before the kids get there, they will be clean. We are also open now because of having in-person instruction, we can have athletics open to a limited degree. But we will not be able to open our facilities to third parties because with hybrid, you can only have very few kids together at the same time. So we will need all of our facilities all the time in order to socially distance our children properly. So we're still not open for third party participation at this time. We hope that will change, but for now it will not. So we just heard from the Oregon Department of Ed today in a superintendent's meeting that Lincoln County is on the list. If we have specific students that are displaced by the fires, we can have them in for in-person instruction. I haven't even talked to Susan about that yet, but she's hearing that for the first time. We're going to have a conversation about for these 57 kids, what that means. We have opened up childcare in three different areas. Hopefully Newport will be the fourth. And we already have students enrolled in school age childcare in Lincoln City with partnership of Parks and Rec, Toledo Library, OCCC South Campus, and hopefully with Newport Parks and Rec starting very, very soon. So yeah, and those daycares are, they're going. So we've kind of done some stuff we've never done before. And we're just going to keep on innovating and being creative and work through teamwork because life has been nuts, just nuts. And we're just trying really hard to keep up and do what's right for families, staff and kids most of all.
Thanks for the update, Dr. Gray, and thanks for being a good partner. You know, I know you and I have worked on some childcare grants and stuff like that together and just appreciate your help and leadership with that. So thank you. I don't have any questions at this point, but I really appreciate the update and you being here today. I know your schedule's busy. Commissioner Hall, anything for Dr. Gray?
No questions. I appreciate the update as well, and I can certainly empathize here at the county and for a lot of folks, we're all, thanks to the year of pandemic and wildfire, we're all doing things that we've never, you know, in dealing with situations, we've never had to deal with before. But somehow I guess we're all getting through it together. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hunt, anything?
Well, I've said this before, Dr. Gray, when you were in a meeting, and I don't know if it was at one of our Board of Commissioners meetings or another one, but I certainly saw the willingness of some of your employees to volunteer and help. I generally get to the Toledo High School parking lot. I don't go on the track because it's closed. But I do park in a parking lot and we'll take a walk through Toledo. And during the fire, there were employees that were outside in front of the Toledo High School. They had food, they had clothing, they had other things to help people that had been relocated. And I actually was able to have a conversation with a couple that was camping in one of the Toledo parks. And they had mentioned that they had been up to the high school. They had been able to take some showers. They'd gotten some food. And so, you know, shout out to those employees. And certainly they weren't the only school district employees, but I witnessed firsthand their willingness to help and the appreciation of some of those that had benefited from their willingness.
The county has been a tremendous partner to the school district, you guys. And I can't thank you enough. We've worked really closely with Rachel Maddox Hughes. She's just a tremendous employee, a great partner. And we are being written into a grant. We've been working on countywide and region-wide childcare grants. And we're going to be the recipient of an extra technology assistant through her efforts and the efforts of the county. The county has been tremendous with just assisting us in any way possible. Our staff has took people in our buses all over the county, brought people from Newport back to their homes. We're since March, almost over a million meals. If you watch a bus pull up with the lights flashing, people are running up on those buses.
I see it almost.
Right?
I see it almost every day.
Almost every, me too. I've taken even pictures and video of that. You know, it's just been a tremendous partnership. It's really hard for people to understand why our kids are not back in school. And it's really hard and we get hammered on a daily basis. But having just got off the line with Colt Gill with ODE, that is, those metrics are not changing. And I want to tell you that out of the 580,000 kids in Oregon, 5,000 have gotten COVID. 580,000 kids that attend school, probably more kids than that, 5,000 have gotten COVID. 60 have gone to the hospital and zero have died, thank God. So all of the states that have followed our metrics, and there are about four or five that are really stripped, they have the same statistics as we do, very low cases. It's hard to argue with.
I think you're echoing some comments that commissioners were sharing when we were still in phase one or hearing comments that commissioners were hearing when we were still in phase one. So keep up the good work.
Thank you. So much.
Yep. Thank you for being here. I know you have to run. Thank you. All right, Florence, you're back up.
All right. Good afternoon, commissioners. Florence Portas, Deputy Director for Public Health. So I will try my best. Bear with me. I have a few updates on the indicators. So first of all, the total case count is 485, which include 18 presented cases. And the positivity rate for the week 9/27 to 10/3rd is 0.8%. Which there was one positive test out of 121 tests conducted. You can move on to the next slide, please. So, you know, per usual, the the age group that is the most affected by COVID-19 continues to be the 20 to 29 year olds. Thank you. There is still, according to this graph, a pretty low community transmission. And the mostly prevalent community transmission is among the 20 to 39 year olds. So over the last few days, so I can give you a case count for October, that is of four at this time. And for the last slide, I believe the public health indicators. So we have the first two indicators that are in green and this is this is good. I just want to mention for the the very big jump in increase in new cases in the last seven days, because we have so very, very little numbers of COVID-19s, the percentage, the jump seems really high. But the small numbers that we have can explain that that big increase. In terms of the percent of cases that are not being traced to a non-source in the last seven days. So same thing, the small numbers can very much explain the higher percentage here. And by while talking with Molly Vance, who is our Communityable Disease Supervisor, she was mentioning that when we interview people, they're just, they just don't know where they could have contacted the disease. And some of them had traveled outside of the community, which could be an explanation among others. And lastly, for the percent of cases in the last seven days that needed a follow-up within 24 hours. So we realized at the end of last week that we're having data entry error, which explains the the percentage not being met. So this error has been fixed and we should see that number go back up. So additionally, yes?
Go go ahead. I'll wait till the end.
Okay, thank you. So I wanted also to share that on September 24th, there was a testing operation at the Pacific Seafood in Newport where they tested 121 employees and those employees were day shift employees. And those individuals came came back negative, all of them. And then Rebecca and I discussed, we wanted to let you know that we're going to do tabletop with the school district and the various schools in the county on Thursday morning to kind of get ready and prepared for various scenarios that might arise with COVID-19 and how we'll handle the situation. And finally, as you may or may not know, the CDC has made some recommendations for Halloween activities. And the Oregon Health Authority has adopted those recommendations and pretty much the recommendation is that it would be best if people could avoid trick or treats this year. So this is what I've got. Any questions?
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt you earlier. So my one question I had on the percent of cases in last seven days with follow-up and 24 hours, which dropped down to 78%, you were saying that was a data entry kind of situation. And I know we recently converted over to a new system and that conversion, not just for us, but for many counties, has been a little bit problematic. So my question is, was it simply that the data got put in incorrectly, but that we were actually following up with people on time? It just didn't get reported as such?
So my understanding is that when OHA assigns cases, they assign cases to individuals that are in who are in charge of the case investigation in the system. What has happened is that some of those cases were assigned to people who were not working on that particular day and they hadn't clicked the out of office little button in the in the Opera system. So that counted again.
I see. So when when you're gone, you're supposed to log out, so to speak, so that you're, you don't get cases assigned. Okay, but it sounds like we've corrected that now.
We have.
Okay, thank you. No more questions from me. Commissioner Hall, questions or comments?
I don't have any questions this time. The update's helpful and I appreciate the context that when people see rather dramatic percentage increases, it's so important that they understand we're still talking about really, really small numbers.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes, exactly what Commissioner Hall said, and I'll give some mathematical examples. If you have one positive case and then you go to two positive cases in a seven day period, that's a 200% increase. If you go from two cases to four cases in a seven day period, that's a 200% increase. So, well, at initial glance, you may see the county doesn't comply in three out of six of those categories. If you look beneath the numbers, our actual numbers of cases and our actual percentage of positive cases is extraordinarily low. And therefore, I think that puts the those other numbers in proper perspective. And that's all I have.
Yeah, and in closing, I would just remind people that, you know, yes, we are in phase two and you know, you're able to go work out now and make reservations to go swimming and sees that movie theaters have opened and that kind of stuff. But I would just remind people that there's a lot riding on us being able to both stay in phase two, but also being able to get our kids back to school. As Dr. Gray said, they want to get kindergarten back and then two weeks first grade and then two weeks second grade and on and on and up and up we go. And so, you know, it's it's not a free for all. We still have to wear a mask. That's a state policy. And hopefully that we can maintain both phase two and keep our numbers down so that our kids can get back to school. So just just a reminder to folks that, you know, we're not out of this by any means. All right, Wayne, anything you wanted to add to the COVID-19 discussion?
No, I think you covered it very well.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Florence. And I know you have another meeting to jet off to, so feel feel free to go. Next up on the reports, Commissioner Reports, I will go ahead and pass. I feel like I don't have a report this week. Commissioner Hall, anything?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of things on Thursday morning, I believe it was. I was part of a conference call with representatives of the Oregon Community Foundation, the president of the Association of Oregon Counties, Jim Dougherty, some other groups such as CASA of Oregon, which is working on, you know, which focuses on farmworker housing. And if I understand correctly, Commissioner Jacobson, you've had some conversations with AOC staff as well. But they are pushing and trying to encourage the leadership of Oregon Housing and Community Services to get behind what's called Project Turnkey, an allocation that if the proposed $20 million they're asking for is realized, could potentially acquire and open up as intermediate, I would say, fire refugee housing, 1,000 units across the state of Oregon. And I would say that although the OHCS leadership didn't make a firm commitment at that meeting, there was certainly a definite receptivity to the idea and and at least liking the concept, you know, this is certainly not a new idea. A lot of communities, either local government or nonprofits, have done conversions of lodging properties to permanent residents. California, you know, with all the wildfires that have ravaged the state over the last few years, did a very similar model on a much bigger scale called Project Home Key. And certainly there are, you know, challenges and pitfalls, but the enthusiasm and momentum for that is very strong. Then on Friday. Then on Friday morning, I chaired the monthly meeting of the Oregon Housing Stability Council, which advises the Housing and Community Services Department, works with the governor and the legislature on housing policies and priorities, and certainly the impact of the wildfires was front and center in the discussion. And OHCS trying to mobilize very quickly a variety of resources to support folks, again, in the immediate need, you know, perhaps after the Red Cross and others, kind of put people at the gate, helping them through the next steps. You know, kind of a, a, a good illustration, unfortunately, of how widespread this wildfire disaster has been. There are nine members on the council from all parts of the state, and four members, four, four of us live in communities that are, that have seen significant impact on residential housing stock and just every other aspect of community life because of wildfire. And the leadership offered us a pretty firm assurance that this is priority number one for the agency right now, and they would keep us updated pretty constantly on progress. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Commissioner Hall. Commissioner Hunt, do you have a report to share this week?
I'll just briefly mention a couple of activities that are actually involving jobs, job creations. The Maritime Task Force has a consultant that is presently reaching out to various stakeholders in the public sector, as well as the private sector, to fine tune what are the actual needs of the maritime industry. And then that is toward developing some educational programs and job training programs to address those needs, as there is a big need on the horizon with people retiring, and those jobs pay above the state average. Also, in the area of jobs, working with the Economic Alliance Board and Greg Wolfe from Oregon Solutions at AOC. And we will be putting together, I'll be convening some listening sessions for, again, stakeholders in all parts of the county to provide input on how, how they envision the county doing economic development, which is a prime driver of jobs. So a couple of activities related to jobs.
All right, thanks both of you for sharing. I will first apologize for my kind of erratic behavior. It probably looks weird. I have a bee in my office that I've been trying to kill all meetings, so apologies for that. I think I just got them, so hopefully, hopefully I'll be done with that, but I'm sure it looks odd, so.
Get the bee a hive, and you'll have honey, Katie.
I should, outside, yes. All right, moving on under decision and action, Thompson Sanitary, oh, my agenda just went away. Sorry, Thompson's Sanitary Uniform Rate Reporting Format, presented by Wayne Belmont County Council, Rob and Amy Thompson from Thompson Sanitary. So Wayne, I'll let you kick it up.
Thank you, Commissioners. And again, because I'm on the phone, I'm not really sure who's here from Thompson's. I assume Rob is here, but it's Amy and/or Joe Cook or Ken Riley, who's actually at the meeting?
Yeah, thank you, Wayne. So my business partner and brother, Ken Riley, he's on the call, and Joe Cook did join us. I've been texting with him. He's the other caller on. And then my wife, Amy, that's why we're not wearing masks. She's our recycling, recycling education coordinator for Thompson Sanitary. So back to you, Wayne.
Thank you. And first of all, let me apologize for sort of the lateness of bringing this matter before the Board of Commissioners. Obviously, we've had a, one or two things going on here. Thompson's did submit the report as required under the Lincoln County Code, our Uniform Rate Reporting Format, in a timely fashion that was received. We just didn't get around to scheduling it at an appropriate time here to take consideration. I do know that the same report was provided to the city of Newport, which is the other franchise area within Thompson's service area. And the city has acted on the request from Thompson Sanitary Service. And Rob, you or Ken or Joe or Amy can tell us about what happened when you went to the city, too. But this is, we've gone through a couple of these recently with the other franchised haulers in the county, North Lincoln and Dolls, and received the request. So the board's very familiar with the process of reviewing these particular requests and the adjustments that need to be made in accordance with the county code. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Rob, and he can lead the group through their presentation, and then I'll answer any questions anybody might have.
Okay, thanks, Wayne. Yeah, our, our report was submitted, and thank you for pointing out the fact that we tried to get this in front of the Board of Commissioners in a timely fashion. We've been awfully busy as well, and just one thing seems to happen after another here in 2020. So the city of Newport chose option B, which is to allow kind of a postponement of a CPI after 30 days' notice. And so we've provided two options to the board today to review. This Uniform Rate Reporting Format's been around since the early 2000s, and that's why we continue to work with Joe Cook, who was one of the original authors of that reporting format. And so with that, I'll probably turn it over to Joe and/or really at this time, just answer any questions that the Commissioners may have about the report this year.
I don't have any questions at this point. Commissioner Hall, questions?
I really don't. You know, this is a regular exercise for us, and as usual, everything is laid out in a very straightforward, clear format. So appreciate the information.
Commissioner Hunt, anything? Oh, you're muted, Commissioner Hunt.
Can't, couldn't find the button, you know? No, I guess my, my only comment would be ordinarily, I, I like to see, you know, increases done kind of routinely, and I think that leads to less sticker shock if you let them build up. But I think, under the circumstances, a delay of a short period of time certainly is probably the right thing and makes a lot of sense. So I, I thank Thompson Sanitary for offering that option and seeing the value in it. So thank you.
Okay, Wayne, do we need a action today, or do we need to wait a following week to do that? No, I think we're on decision and action. So do you need a motion?
I do need a motion, and you have the two options that are outlined in the letter that was provided. And again, for purposes of consistency, if you followed what was done by the city of Newport, it's probably going to be simpler. The county unincorporated area is a smaller franchise area than the city itself within the, the total service area for Thompson. So what we have tried to do, at least in the past, was look to see what our partners did in other jurisdictions and try to be consistent with that, so.
So, Madam Chair, I'll move for approval of the Uniform Rate Reporting Format and the increase in rates as offered under option B.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. All right, motion carries. Thanks for being here, everybody.
Thank you very much. Just have two other quick items. One is, I submitted an update on what we've done for outreach and communication to our customer base. Has to do with recycling education. I hope that you get a chance just to quickly flip through that. It's about four pages of how we keep our customers, you know, keep them in the, in the loop on what's going on for things at the curb, the curbside services. And then the other item, I really want to say a big thank you. Doug Hunt, you, you've always been our liaison between the haulers in Lincoln County and the solid waste district manager. Paul Seitz is new to us recently, and the, the haulers met last Thursday, and we talked about fire debris, and we talked about all kinds of things. And it's just really nice to have Paul on board. He's doing a great job, and I think he's working about as hard as he can right now with all the things that are faced with our waste ship. And so that's just a big thank you to Paul. And we, we've worked with him on a number of things that I won't go into now, but he's doing a heck of a good job.
So if I may, Chair Jacobson, thank you, Rob. And I, dare I say, I think he got thrown into the fire pretty quickly on his job. But I'm going to ask for your help here. My wife has accumulated a substantial stack of, of, I guess alkaline batteries, and we used to be able to recycle those through the courthouse, as my understanding that there's really no way to recycle those, although somebody said the library's doing it, but they're not open.
And we have a mute button.
No, you're muted, Rob.
I went backwards on the mute button, so, yeah. So Commissioner Hunt, we accept those at our office where our recycling center is at, and so you can bring those to us. I'm not as familiar with Doll in Toledo, if they accept those or not, which will be closer to where I know you live. And with COVID and closures, the library is another location, but obviously not, not open to that, so.
Well, I'll, I'll confirm with Dolls, but if not, you'll see me with a, just say a sack of batteries. Thank you.
That sounds good. We'll do the right thing with them.
I, I would just, I would just add, I'll do a little shameless promotion for Thompson's, that they have a fabulous app, Commissioner Hunt, where you can look up what is recyclable. So Amy's given me the thumbs up, which I think you told me about at our last VOC meeting that you were at, and it's quite good, so thanks for that.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good point, good reminder.
App is pretty neat, and so is the Waste Wizard. So thank you all for your time, and thanks for having us on the agenda today.
All right, thank you both. All right, on to our other decision action item, in the matter of emergency public health declaration for cleanup of hazardous waste related to Echo Mountain Complex Fire, presented by Wayne Belmont County Council.
Commissioners, this is another item that is a prerequisite to our full cleanup program, debris cleanup program that we're doing. In our discussions with other counties and the state, it looks like what we need to do is identify what's something that we already know, and that is the toxicity of the waste that resulted from the fire, and recognize that through an appropriate resolution, a declaration locally, that there is an emergency due to the nature of the waste that's there and the need for cleaning it up. And so I've been working with other counties, and in fact, I've been diligently working as this, this progressed to finalize up the resolution. I think I have it just about done for you to adopt today. And let me just describe what it does. It's the, both Lincoln County and the state of Oregon and the federal government have declared emergencies and disasters because of the wildfire itself. And this is just a, an ancillary or component part of that declaration, and that is that we're declaring that the waste that resulted from the wildfire is toxic and a public health threat, and therefore needs to be cleaned up. So I've been working again with local counties to get the, the appropriate language in here, identify the provisions in our local code and emergency operations plan, as well as the provisions in state law that allow us to do this and proceed in this manner. So that has been prepared, and your findings are essentially that debris and ash from the fires contain hazardous substances, and that's including the stuff that was burned, such as siding, roofing tiles, insulation, other household items, paint, gasoline, cleaning products, pesticides, those kinds of things. And that that debris does remain after the wildfire, and it exposes residents to toxic materials, and therefore it needs to be properly handled, transported and disposed of. And then there's a variety of other findings related to that. And then the final act is that you declare, you're declaring basically an additional state of emergency for Lincoln County as of this date, due to the fact that there's hazardous waste that was created by the fire and that, that needs to be cleaned up in an appropriate manner and safe manner. So if I can, I, can I get a motion to adopt this particular resolution? I will give this to you at the conclusion of the meeting. We'll get it adopted and off to our EOC, the State Emergency Management, and then off to FEMA. And that, again, we've kind of checked one of those boxes that's necessary for us to proceed with the debris cleanup program.
I'd be happy to make that. I'm sorry, but first, could I ask Mr. Belmont a question? And that would be, so this, this will now be our third concurrent declaration of emergency, and I'm just wondering, in your 34 years with the county, Mr. Belmont, have you ever seen a situation where we had three emergency, separate emergency declarations at the same time?
No, and I'm hoping we don't have to do a fourth, because I keep looking for more rain, so we don't have to actually go the route of declaring a drought, since that's the other one that's actually hanging over us right now.
Historic times indeed, but not in the way we'd wish for, but we deal with them. So I am happy to make the motion to declare an emergency public health declaration for cleanup of hazardous waste related to the Echo Mountain Complex Fire.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Thank you, Wayne, for making sure we can get that resolution as, as quickly as possible. Appreciate it. All right, any other business? Commissioner Hall, other business?
I think that's enough for one afternoon.
Okay, Commissioner Hunt, anything?
I would agree. I think that's enough for one afternoon.
Okay, Wayne, anything else?
Nothing more. Thank you.
Okay, great. We will go ahead and adjourn. Our next Monday, October 12th, 2023 PM meeting is canceled due to Association of Oregon Counties Day, I think now more than ever. It's really important that we are all advocating, so we will not have a meeting that day. So our next Board of Commissioners meeting is Monday, October 19th, 2020, at 3 PM virtually. All right, thanks, everybody. We are adjourned.